Welcome. With us this evening, we have, beginning on the right, on your left, David Dersflinger, Clint Heidold, Tom Neely, Kelly Scarf, and Mike Flahos. I will begin with David, and you have a three-minute opening statement.
Good evening. I'm candidate, school board candidate, Dave Dersflinger. I'd like to thank the Chamber of Commerce for putting this together, as well as all of you for taking the time to be here tonight, regardless of who you're here to support. It's a privilege to get a chance to meet so many wonderful people who share with me in calling Morton home. There's a lot of people around town like me that you'll find that have called Morton home for their entire lives. It really is a special place, and I believe it is the people and the community, and the community, that make it this way. We're blessed to have a first-class district in Morton, and again, we have the people in our community to thank. Everyone involved in the district, no matter what role, has one goal in mind, and that is preparing our children for the rest of their lives. I cannot stress enough how important of a responsibility this is. There are people who will tell you that our best times of the nation are behind us. I don't bite, and we have an opportunity every day through the ways in which we educate and develop our youth to prove these people wrong. Education takes an entire community, and when you can get the entire community on board, with everyone pulling in the same direction, special things can and do happen every day. Together, we make special things happen. I believe it is important for school districts to be open with the community, and vice versa, ensuring that no one is left out of important discussions. If there's one thing you can count on from me, it's openness. And if you ask some of the audience members, particularly my wife Megan, she might tell you that I can be a little too open at times, but always with the best intentions, all right, honey? I can't help it. I'm going to tell you what I think, and I appreciate it when others do as well. That's enough about me, though. Tonight, we're here to discuss education. When you're tasked with something as important as educating our youth, nothing will ever be easy. You'll find a lot of people who disagree with you, or share different ideas, or beliefs. This is okay. This is what makes life so great. A few issues come to mind, and I'm sure we'll touch on a few tonight, that I think it's time that we, that may appear as if they divide our community. Facilities, daily P, all-day kindergarten. These three come to mind, and I think it's time that we come together as a community and start having some serious discussions without leaving anyone out. Building additions address needs at just three of six schools. I don't think anyone is for sure what the repercussions are of continuing without daily P, but we do know that the district is out of waivers. All-day kindergarten is one we hear about all the time. You look all around us, and schools are offering all-day kindergarten, yet a town as affluent as Morton does not. If I am given the opportunity, no, the privilege, of serving with our top-notch superintendent in school board, I intend to be a problem solver, not a people divider. Past boards, administrators, teachers, parents, and support staff have put this district in a wonderful position, but we still do and always will have a lot of challenging work ahead of us. I would ask of the voters to allow me to accept this challenge. I appreciate the opportunity to be here. Thanks.
Thank you, David. Next up is Clint Heidold. Clint?
Hi, my name is Clint Heidold, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you this evening. I'm married to Stephanie, my wonderful wife of seventeen years, and the two of us met when we were in college down at the University of Illinois. We've lived for twelve years here in Morton, and we're both licensed foster parents. We've fostered several children as we've been here in Morton, and we now have five kids, four of which are in the schools, and our eldest son will be starting the kindergarten next year. I work at Core Construction here in town, and I'm involved in the community. I'm a member of the Apostolic Christian Church here in Morton. I've taught Sunday School, in Morton Rotary, done a little bit of coaching with youth sports, and involved with the Chamber of Commerce, and I'm an incumbent on the Morton School Board. People might ask why I'm running for the board, and it's been a great experience so far. I've been very blessed to serve on the board with the people that I've worked with so far. I believe the schools are a very important part of our community, and I want to be able to serve the community and use my skills and experience to give back to the community. I believe my personal values are a reflection of those that are shared by any of the people in the community, and on a personal level, I want to see my children get a good education that the Morton School District provides. What do I bring to the board? I feel I have a very diverse set of skills and background with my work history. Through my work, I have some experience and expertise with facilities. I've also been proactive as I've been on the board in educating myself. There's some mandatory training that's required, or will be required, with new board members. I've been proactive and actually gotten that training ahead of time, even though it hasn't been required. And having been on the school board now for four years, I have some experience and some history with the district. I feel like I have a short learning curve. Schools and everything that's involved with them is a complex subject, and something that took me a while to learn, and it took me a while to come up to a speed. And I feel like now that I've been on the board for four years, I have some history and experience that I can continue to work effectively with the administration to continue to work on some of the issues that have been alluded to and continue to move our schools forward. We have a great school district, and, you know, not a meeting goes by where we're asking ourselves what we can do to do better and improve, and, you know, I'm here to serve the community and try to make those improvements. You know, some of the experiences that I've had while on the school board, I've been involved in the Finance Committee, Transportation Committee, been involved with administrator hirings, and also contract negotiations. And so, like I said, I feel like I have some experience to bring to bear in the next term. Thank you.
Excuse me for coming tonight with a cold. Thank you for being here tonight, and thanks to the Chamber for hosting this event. I'm passionate about public education. It's truly the foundation of our great nation, and I'm also passionate about our schools. I just feel that we need to do everything we can to prepare our young people. I've been asked, "Why are you going to seek reelection again?" But I had many people ask that I seek reelection again, and to continue to provide leadership and be on the board as we move forward with all of the issues facing our district, when you consider all of the mandates coming from the state. My wife Becky, forty-three years, and I have three daughters who went through our schools and have gone on to be successful in their own right. I graduated from DMAC High School in 1965, and I was just a few months out, and I got drafted, and off to Vietnam I went. And some of those dark days were teachers and people that got me through some tough times. And since I've come back, I've tried to give back to this community in every way that I could. I was a scout leader, church youth leader, even before we had children. But that's, I've been involved in something since my high school days. Serving as a school board member is really rewarding for me. My biggest reward, though, is on graduation day, when I see those students go across that stage and realize many of them will go on to be professionals, whether it be doctors, teachers, lawyers, whether they become an engineer, electricians, plumbers, whatever it may be. They're going to make this world a better place, and truly, that's my reward. Every class has people like that. We must provide an excellent education for all of our students. We're recognized as having excellent schools, but we can't be complacent. We must continue to try and be better, better tomorrow than we are today. But what makes our schools so good? It's the faculty and staff. It's the students that work hard. It's parents, and it's a community that cares. And it's truly rewarding to be a part of great school district, to be able to hire great superintendents who have served us well in the past and presently. We must continue the pursuit of offering the very best education possible and to use the taxpayers' money wisely. I have long been an advocate for balanced budgets. There was a time that it was hard to do that, but the board, over the years, have maintained the importance of those balanced budgets, and we need to continue to do that. And we must continue to think about all of the issues that we have to address, facilities and programs and beyond. So with all that in mind, I would love to continue to serve in this capacity as your school board member. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Kelly?
Thank you, Leek. As many of you may know in this room, I'm a graduate of Morton High School. Class of 1990, Kelly Regal at the time, Kelly Scarf now. And when I decided to start thinking about running for the Board of Education, I approached Dr. Hall, and I asked her a very important question. "If I'm going to run for this position, will anyone have access to my high school academic files?" And when she assured me that those files would be private, it took a little weight off my shoulders. Some of you will know why, but in all seriousness, and it kind of feels scary to say this, it doesn't feel like that long ago that I was a student walking down those hallways right outside of these doors. And some of you may or may not know that I'm an artist at heart, and the first drawing pencil that I picked up was at the junior high across the street. This district has shaped me into the person that I am today. This district is now shaping my two children into the adults they're going to be in the future. Hey, buddy. Those two reasons alone give me the passion to want to run for the Board of Education. But there's more than that. I'd like to really share a thought with you guys. The majority, if not everyone, in this room has had a profound contribution to District 709. Our property taxes fund approximately eighty-five percent of the district's annual thirty-million-dollar budget. That means in a sense that everyone in this room is an owner of the district. And I firmly believe that we need strong, good stewards on the Board of Education to care for, but to grow that investment. We need people who will support Dr. Hall and her administration while engaging in open, two-way conversation with the community to develop the vision for our future of our district. We need people who understand that we cannot rely on the past successes of Morton districts. We have got to work and grow that district and make it better for our future. We also need people that understand that we do have a great district. We have an outstanding district that I'm proud of. But with hard work, fiscal responsibility, community engagement, and forward planning, that we could have a better district. We could have a more successful district, and that is something that's very important to me. I feel like I am that person for the Board of Education. I sit here with you tonight, and I humbly ask for your vote. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Kelly. Next up is Mike Flahos. Mike?
Hello. Thank you for taking the time either night to come and listen to all of us speak tonight. I'm glad to know that Clint has only been in town for twelve years. I felt I was left out being, I moved here about fourteen years ago with my wife Courtney. We have two sons right now. They both attend Jefferson School. One's in sixth grade and one's in third grade. And being part of the Jefferson community has been a fantastic experience for our family. I actually blame Kelly for me sitting here tonight. Last summer, she called and was looking for me to participate as a committee member on the 709 Connect Committee. And when I found out what the 709 Connect was trying to do, I was very excited about that opportunity. The 709 Connect was taking the school board, and they were actually going to try and share information with the community about the state of our school district. And I thought that was a fantastic idea. But even more importantly, I thought what was the best part about it was they were trying to engage the community and find out what the community wanted in their schools. That was a fantastic experience for me. After that was over in November last year, I was inspired to learn a little bit more about our schools. And what I found out was awesome. We didn't just have good schools in Morton, we had great schools in Morton. I mean, our school district is rated in the top ten percent of all the school districts in Illinois. And that's a huge achievement, which really is a testament to how well our school board has done in the past. They have done a good job of maintaining the status quo in Morton schools over the past several years. And the status quo has been exceptional, right? We've got great proficiency in all the areas of our academics. But what I want to know is how do we go from great, that we are right now today, to exceptional in the future? And I think the only way you can go from great to exceptional is to have a long-term vision or plan. If you don't have a vision or a plan of where you want to be in the future, how do you know what steps you're going to take today? How are you going to tackle the difficult issues we have? All-day kindergarten, do we need it? The PE situation, which the state says we have to have. Do we need to build another school? Is it a high school? Is it a middle school? I'm not sure right now. But these are all the things that we need to do. How do we handle the crowded elementary schools we have right now? Where does the Jefferson School Building fit into that plan? Where do all the schools fit in that plan? If we don't have a long-term plan, we don't know how to deal with the issues at hand today and the steps to take moving forward in the future. I think all the experience that we have sitting on the school board right now, and there's, you know, two of the people sitting up here today have got great experience. I also think it's time for, maybe it might be time for a fresh perspective. I think it's a good thing to get new ideas. I think we expect our children today to be able to learn on the fly and think of new things and creative ways to solve problems, and that's the type of person I am. I think on the fly, I look at all the situations and all the possibilities, and I work together with the community to try and solve problems, because that's what I want to do, to provide a great experience for all of the kids in our community today and in the future.
Thank you, Mike. Our first question is, "What is the greatest challenge facing our school district, and how would you overcome that challenge?" And I will start with Clint.
That's a good question. I think, you know, your first reaction might be school funding, because it seems like that's always a challenge, and, you know, you never know what the state's throwing at us. But actually, our school district is in great shape financially. And I think our biggest challenge right now, a lot of people in the community don't realize, but our entire curriculum is being revamped through the common core state standards. It's something that is being imposed on us. And I think our biggest challenge in our school district is really making sure that that's adapted and fits what our values are and the way we want our school district to operate.
Thank you, Clint. Tom?
I think our next biggest challenge is planning for the future. Our first step after the last referendum was to do what all good school boards do, and that is to engage the community, and that was the 709 Connect. We need to address our curriculum, technology, facilities, all of those things, and still stay fiscally responsible. Even though we have funds today with all of the state mandates, we don't have unlimited coffers. So I think it's going to take a wise school board to meet those challenges.
Thank you, Tom. Kelly?
I would say our biggest challenge is the state of Illinois itself. Less funding, more non-funded mandates. If you don't know what a non-funded mandate is, they want you to do things that cost money, but they're not going to give you any money to do it. That becomes an issue for us as a district. I think obviously, keeping with the theme of fiscal responsibility that has always been important to Morton and should stay that way, but also, we have to be creative in our thinking and how we're going to deal with those mandates without the money behind them.
Thank you, Kelly. Mike?
I have to go right back to the lack of an established plan. We haven't had a long-term plan. We don't know where our schools, where we want our schools to be five or ten years from now. Without a plan, you don't know the steps you have to take. You don't know what you're going to need to spend your money on, and what you're going to need to how to develop your curriculum in the future. We expect our kids to have an academic plan. You know, it starts in kindergarten and goes through twelfth grade. Even in high school, it starts, and you have a four-year academic plan. And I think that we need to have a plan for our district so that we enable the future of our children.
Thank you, Mike. David?
I think it's all a challenge, and maybe the hardest challenge recently has been engaging and connecting with the community. So maybe that's something we should work on. And if we can do that real well, I think we're prepared to handle any challenge.
Thank you. Our next question is kind of a conglomerate of several here. I have several questions regarding specific facilities, and so if you would just take a few seconds and tell us your view of the current facilities and the school system, and what you think the state of that is. So, Tom, we'll start with you.
Well, one of the things that we asked of Dr. Kilpatrick was to take a look at the assessment of all of our buildings. And we came back with needs at every school. And we also looked at planning for the future, looking at the PE requirements. And obviously, a plan was put together after engaging the community, and there were people that felt we didn't have a wide enough debt to get that done. But the community chose to turn that referendum down. So then we said, "Back to the drawing board. Before we establish a new plan, let's have another connection with the community," and that was 709 Connect. So that's where we are today.
Thank you, Tom. Kelly?
I know that in working with Dr. Hall, that we do have a plan for all of our facilities, a very detailed plan of the next five years, and how we can take care of those facilities and maintain those facilities. What we need to realize is that right now, all of our facilities are functioning facilities that are completely full of children. And we need to maintain and care for all of those facilities in the same way. Then we need to go to the community and build the facilities plan for the future. And we do that by engaging, getting feedback from a broad cross-section of the community, and build that future facilities plan.
Thank you, Kelly. Mike?
Well, you have five seconds per each facility, right? A lot of our facilities are great, and we're doing, the school board is doing a good job at keeping them operational year over year. But, you know, we have a space issue. That's why we added some classrooms in the elementary, in three of the elementary schools. And I think we continue to need to look at how we need to grow our facilities or, you know, redesign our facilities so that they provide the learning opportunities that are required in today's world.
Thank you, Mike. David?
Obviously, we have space issues. The good thing is what's happening inside those schools is amazing. We're really utilizing what we have right now very well. But I can't stress enough how important it's going to be to get ourselves prepared and put some very detailed plans together regarding facilities.
Thank you, David. Clint?
I would say our facilities are very well-maintained, as has been alluded to by some of the other people here. You know, our number-one issue is making sure that we have adequate space to meet the academic needs of our students. Some secondary issues as we look at the possibility of daily PE and all-day kindergarten, those are going to require additional facilities. And then, looking out into the future, just like we have a cycle of replacing buses, we need to have a long-term plan for how we're going to replace facilities in the future.
Thank you, Clint. This next one, we'll start with Kelly. Regardless of your feelings on the Jefferson School Building itself, will you make a commitment to keeping a great school in the Jefferson attendance area? Kelly?
I personally think, having grown up in Morton, that neighborhood schools are very important. And if I had my say in the vision for the school district, I think it would be important that we keep those neighborhood schools in the neighborhoods that they're in. But that's something also that we need to go back to the community and work with Dr. Hall and the district to see what's the best fit for the community and the district.
Thank you, Kelly. Mike?
She copied off my paper. It's her academic career. She said so. You know, I've said, many people, everybody I talk to, I'm a firm believer in neighborhood schools. I think that's one of the things that makes the Morton school community fantastic. It engages the people that live together, to work together, strive together. I think that we need schools in the neighborhoods. So without, it would take a huge plan for me not to want to support that. So right now, I support neighborhood schools.
Thank you, Mike. David?
I believe neighborhood schools are vital. When we were talking about Jefferson, we've already got a space issue in the grade schools. It's the only school with a gym. I think as long as buildings are viable, we might as well use them. But we also have to keep in mind that building's age, and this goes back to planning. We need to put a serious facilities plan together.
Thank you, David. Clint?
Well, I'm not going to say anything different than what you've already heard. You know, I think neighborhood facilities are important. I think as we were looking at, as Tom alluded to, the previous referendum, as we were trying to do some long-term planning there, we recognized that we needed to look at some alternatives for facilities in the neighborhoods. And, you know, again, we need to look at a long-term plan for our facilities because they're not all going to last forever.
Thank you, Clint. Tom?
I was first to push to reopen Letty Brown when I got on the school board, and we maybe got there quicker than someone. There was a plan that came along and said, "Let's go to K3 and 46 attendance centers." I argued against that. I have long been a believer in neighborhood schools, and I'll continue to be that as long as I serve on the board.
Thank you, Tom. I think we have time for one more, and this is another kind of a conglomerate here. There are several questions just regarding the budget and the fiscal situation. I know the school board has always been fiscally prudent. And so if you would just take thirty seconds to address your feelings on the budget and what the funding situation is, and we'll start with Mike.
You know, the great thing about our community is we have been very fiscally conservative. And it's been a good responsibility of the school board to stay financially conservative. And we face some challenging times. Right now, it looks like if the state and federal government continue to cut the funding, as they have over the past, we'll almost be entirely self-funded in five, six, seven years. But I think as a community, we can come together and do that. The school board will be able to do that with input from everyone here.
Thank you, Mike. David?
Yeah, the state and federal situation isn't getting any better. That's why, you know, the 1% sales tax is interesting. The beauty is the voters will get to decide. But yeah, we're talking about facilities here, but, you know, those cost money. So it's a good thing we've been fiscally responsible for so long, but that's going to be part of the planning when we're talking about all this stuff.
Thank you, David. Clint?
I'm a big believer in balanced budgets, and the time that I've been on the board, we've been able to do that, thankfully. You know, I think the fact that we have healthy fund balances in our schools is a testament to the fact that not only are we fiscally conservative, but we don't spend money just because it's there. I think we've so far been very prudent with tax dollars, and I would intend to continue to be.
Thank you, Clint. Tom?
In Tuesday's Puria Journal Star, it said sixty-six percent of the schools in the state of Illinois are deficit spending. This board has said, "We don't want to do that." When you look at all of the state mandates that come out, sixty-eight unfunded, it really gives us a challenge. Our legislators, as they met, there are six thousand bills before the legislature right now. I can't imagine the mandates we're going to be faced with, and they all cost money. So we are going to have to continue to address our needs at the same time of providing a quality education to the students and solving those budget issues that we will be faced with at some point in time.
Thank you, Tom. Kelly?
Of course, fiscal responsibility, as Morton has always done. But also, to mirror Mike, the fact that if we look five years from now, we're getting eight percent from the state of Illinois, which is nothing. We need to forward think. We need to think, "What can we do as a community, as a county, to be able to fund our schools properly so we don't get knocking on that door of, "Oh, next year, here it comes. We're going to be, you know, in the red." So we need to forward think, and we need to plan for those things, and get a handle on it now.
Thank you, Kelly. The last question, I will give each candidate an opportunity to, in thirty seconds, share with us why someone should vote for you. And so we'll start with David again.
I'd just like to reflect on a lot of the things I said in my opening comments. We're a community here, and we have to work together. And I'd like to think that I can do that pretty well. So just like to leave you guys with that. I appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight with all these great candidates. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Clint?
I also alluded to what I feel are some of the positive position points of my candidacy at the beginning. You know, I would just say that, again, I feel like the experience that I've had and what I've demonstrated in the time that I've been on the board is a testament to what I will continue to do. I'm thankful for the opportunity to serve. I'm excited that there's this many people running for the school board. I'm thankful to all of my, I guess you'd call them competitors, that they're willing to run, because, you know, our schools are a great asset to our community. They're really a blessing. And I expect everybody to continue that going forward.
Thank you, Clint. Tom?
It's been an honor for me to serve on the school board and to see our schools continue to get better each year. And I just want to be able to continue to be a part of such a great organization, to hire great people, to have great students trying hard. And I want to be able to look at the 21st century learners and be sure that I played a part in helping continue to make our schools great so that our nation can be... a part in helping continue to make our schools great, so that our nation can be great.
Thank you Tom. Kelly?
When I thought, think about this, I think about who I'd want to vote for, and I want to vote for somebody who's gonna trust their superintendent, but not be afraid to question her. I would want somebody who is going to want to strive for better and more for this district, but have a firm understanding and respect for what the community really wants. I also would want to vote for a person who works from a place of educated and informed decisions, not from a place of fear. And when I think about that, I think that's who I am. So that's why I'd like for all of you to vote for me, please. Thank you.
Thank you Kelly. Mike?
You know, I'm gonna sound a little bit like a broken record here, but I think that the one thing I really want to see out of our school board in the future, hopefully if I'm part of it, is to develop that plan so that we know how to deal with the declining funding and deal with the needs of the community, and I look forward to the opportunity, if given the chance, to listen to the input from the community and figure out what we need for the successful future of our community and schools.
Thank you Mike. And thank you all candidates, please join me in thanking the school.